Into the Republic of worship Saints. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, first, Jesus, and loving God, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for the blessings that we enjoy, and for the things that you challenge. To figure out the opportunity to be a part of it, or to ask if you get the correct decisions we make, correct the conversations we can have. Or we pray that we do the things that are right by you, and are right by us, and we do those things that are going to reach our people, so you can ask and pray.
Larry, before we actually approve the agenda, there's two things I want to address. One is actually an amendment, and with Drew's help, we had a pretty heavy agenda, tried to cover everything, but we missed. Under item C, we're having a public hearing, and we'll wait until seven o'clock, as it was advertised for them to have it. But we need to have a one and a two there, one being the public hearing, the two being action on the road name change. The other item I want to address is, if it's okay with the board, we are going to, if there's any, nobody, we've worked on our sound system. I don't know if you're hearing any better sound in front of you or not, but we're going to go ahead and try something else in motions. She'll pipe them up there, that way everybody can see it, hear it, we'll get the wording right before we take action. Now, that can be requested.
If there's simple motions and everybody's okay with it, but if anybody requests, we can put it up there so that there's clarity. And thank Drew for trying to manage many things over there as well, so if the board's okay with that?
I have no problem, everybody okay with that?
All right, I thank you for that, and that's the only amendment or adjustment that I know of. With that, I'd entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
So moved, a second.
Motion and a second, all in favor of that, make it known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, five oh? There are minutes in your packet from July the eighth, are there any concerns or question?
I do have a correction to a statement that is recorded, where I said that the last Fairgrounds committee meeting, there weren't enough members to conduct business. That was incorrect, there were enough members, so if we could correct that for the record, please.
And how is it written? Is it written, is it, was it, is the minute written as you spoke it?
Yes.
So it's minute is?
Can we amend?
Well, I would just make it publicly known.
Okay, I think I just did.
And then it'll be in this, yeah, in this minute. Other than that, any other questions?
To acknowledge, make the motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minute, so I'm in favor of that, make it known, we're saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh, thank you, thank you, Drew. All right, we'll go ahead and start with item A, Chamber of Commerce Spotlight Business, welcome, good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'd like to start off by welcoming our two newest chamber members to the Chamber of Commerce. We have RE/MAX Realty Group out of Boone, North Carolina. RE/MAX Realty is one of the top producing real estate companies in western North Carolina, with only the most experienced and educated agents available to assist you. We also have Edward Jones Investments, the local branch here in Sparta, Brett Lieberman, he's the financial advisor with them. Edward Jones is a financial services firm headquartered in St. Louis, Missouri. It serves investment clients in the U.S. and Canada through its branch network of more than 14,000 locations. The Chamber is hosting business after hours this Thursday at Skyline Telephone from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m., and everyone's welcome to join us, to come learn about the company, and enjoy some great food, and hopefully win some door prizes. I'd like to take a minute to recognize Mr. Larry Prince, he's wearing our Keep Allegheny Litter Free T-shirt, if you don't mind to stand up. This is an initiative and subcommittee of the Chamber of Commerce. Mark Whittle will be presenting to the Commissioners the next couple of meetings on his efforts and progress so far, so you'll be learning more about that soon in the future. Our spotlight business tonight is Miles' Job Fund, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Miles for him to tell you a little more about his business.
I couldn't hear a thing she was saying, of course, my hearing days don't work too well either, but I hope everybody can hear what I, comments I might have. I'm humbled and appreciative that I would be recognized by the Chamber and by you honorable people to address about our Mile Job Fund, and our Take a Break from the Interstate Initiative that we've created. We did this about 10 years ago because Barbara and I knew what it meant to have small funds to create what you were trying to accomplish. And we, our fund was set up by the amount we put in, was 100,000 upfront. We got some more money from the Golden Leaf Foundation, and we have some regular contributions we get from our 501(c)(3) charity. So we do have some funds available, we have made about near 60 loans so far, and we have been successful in almost all of them. Some people have resold, is this vibrating, is it, does it hear me, it sounds like a?
Little feedback, yeah.
Little feedback, but anyhow, the, the loan portfolio has done real well for us, and we still have about 17, I believe, active loans at this time. And we've made 12 loans in the central business area of Sparta that has helped to keep some doors open, and several, still several of them are still active. We've only had two small loans charged off, and they've not been large, one fellow passed away, another fellow's in jail, so we didn't, that's the only two charge offs that we have had so far. And, but we, we offer advice, and we offer service, so the, the Will's Community College does help us with business plans, and we work together, and we visit them often. And our board directors are all self-employed people, are, got a self-employed background, and well, is Jeff Cox, Dr. Jeff Cox is our, we work diligently with Will's Community College. And the banker who uses, that's also got a background in, in business. So we, our board helps make decisions, and, and we are very grateful to have, we do have some other sources to get additional funds. We work with foundations and with some other people, that we've collaborated our loans with some other folks that needed more money than what we loaned. But we also work with some foundations now to increase our loan, loan funding that we have, and we are, like I say, a 501(c)(3) charity, and we have board meetings monthly, and we, we conduct it in a very businesslike, professional way, and, and we're, the people we serve have been very grateful and humble about the service that we offer. It's usually small loans, the way that banks operate right now, they're, they're, they're difficult to get, you know, little startup loans, and, and they collaborate with us to help, we, to help our homework on this. So that's basically what, we do have applications and brochures in our office, if anybody cares to more, know more about it, and we'd like more publicity out on it as, as available. And the other thing I would like to address this a little bit is our Road Market, Take a Break from the Interstate. That also started about seven years ago with, and the, and the Take a Break, I mean, the Take a Break is to get people off of I-77. If, if people that's lived here forever knows it, the US-21 was the main highway north-south many years ago, when I worked at this all-night service station when I was in high school, that, and had all-night restaurants, and business was barely brisk on 21. But since 77 opened, we lost a lot of that trade, and our effort is to try to get people back on 21, and, and it's working real well so far. We don't just promote the three-day road market, but we promote travel on 21-year-long. And we do this because it affects our, our local citizens, which is the most important asset, I think, that the county has, is the people live here. They're so dedicated and responsible for looking after their home, and their, their neighbors, and everyone else that they're associated with. And these funds, we had over 300 vendors in Allegheny this, this last week for our road market, and we had sales up to, one group told me they had sold $30,000 worth of stuff, but the average was around $2,000, $2,500 was what they sold for the three days. You must apply that out, but, by the 300-plus, that brings right much more revenue into the county that's, that we know, there's no tax money involved, except for the, the heads on pillars, I think it's what, it's called, the tax money from motels and stuff. And we asked for, the, the group, we have, we have two states and seven counties that cooperate with us, and we meet monthly with the board directors there. And that is also an arm of the Mile Job Fund. And we, we meet diligently, and everybody has input, and we get along real well, and, and the unity is unbelievable that we have together. And I just wanted to share those thoughts with you, and, and we're working on a, a impact study is what it brings in this 100 miles, it now runs from Whiffelto-Harm in North Carolina. And, and it, that's, we, they, there's so much to see here, these eight states and national parks along this 100-mile corridor that we got, and that's unheard of for that short a distance. And so we hope that, that we're encouraging travel the whole year long. We have a, one for a group of people, our board meets regularly, and, and the lady that helped me with this, Donna Ham, she's an expert on, on doing brochures and rack cards, and reaching out to Facebook, and we did that this year, and we had around near 60,000 responses on our Facebook. We call it Boost is what is out, we, so we are reaching a lot of people, and, and we, I hope it's, if you're not successful, they're not participating. So that's the only reason it's not, so thank you, everybody, for participating, the ones that did, and like I say, it's for our community, and it brings unity to all of our citizens. Thank you a lot, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them for you. Thank you very much.
Great turnout, thank you. Really be careful on the road, that weekend. All right, we will, item B on the agenda, public comments for agenda items. If anyone would like to address this board on any of the agenda items, feel free to come and do so at this time. Okay, seeing no movement, we will, we're about 15 minutes ahead, so we'll go along to item D, presentations. We have 2019 Youth Voice Initiative representative, a 4H representative here, Ms. Carly Edwards, welcome.
So I'm Carly Edwards, I am a member of Allegheny 4H, I've been doing 4H with them since I was, I think, five or six. And I plan to attend the youth, the youth voice in August, I believe, and I'm excited. So I just, I wanted to thank y'all for letting me go and giving me the opportunity, it's really important, and I appreciate it very much. And I think I need to get a picture with y'all, if that's right, do y'all know?
A good enough camera.
Sure it's insured.
Okay, so, yeah, I think, yeah, I gotta do that, and I just want to thank you again for all your support and letting me do this, thank you.
For those of you that may not be familiar with it, the Association of County Commissioners started about eight years ago involving our youth, and through the 4H, they get a lot of exposure, and it'll be a, a big time for them for a couple of days down there, and there'll be a youth breakfast on Saturday morning. And Lord willing, I'll see you there.
Now, excuse me, didn't you say that you'd been in 4H for 20 years?
No. Since I was five or six, I believe.
So you're 12 now.
I'm 13.
Oh, okay, I was close.
You want to get a picture?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, all right. All right, she's wanting a picture, so we'll go around front after. Okay, item number two is Blue Ridge Read, I think I see Ms. DeBeau's, there she is, welcome.
Molly DeBeau's, and tonight I wanted to share information about the 2019 Read. I hope you remember that we have been doing the Community Read for about five years now. And this year, the name of our book is The Sea is Silent, and the author is Cameron Kent. I'm not here to ask you for additional money, we are funded by the Allegheny Arts Council and the North Carolina Arts Council. And we also get some money from the Community Foundation to buy books that we distribute throughout, throughout the county, through the library, and also the little libraries that are the small boxes that have books in them throughout the county. We are very pleased to have Cameron Kent as our guest author. He was here in June, and we had about 60 people come to buy his book and to get autographs. And I wasn't familiar with him, but many of you know that he was an anchor with WXIA in Winston. So more than one person said they were used to having him in their living room. And he was very friendly, and sat and signed books as long as people wanted them. And then he came over to Muddy Creek and participated in open mic, so he sings and plays the guitar too, he's a man of many talents. The book this year, the setting is at the beach, since we're doing it in August, we thought, why not have a vacation theme? But the book is kind of suspenseful, and a little bit of mystery, and even talks about, I'm looking over at Zach, media integrity, which is kind of a topical.
Got that covered.
Idea, I think he does too. We would love to have you participate in these activities. On the back of the bookmark, it tells you about a book talk discussion, the Lunch and Learn, that will be held at the library, and that will be conducted by Cindy Atwood. And then the other two events that are on the other side of the bookmark are August 23rd and 24th. On the 23rd at 7:00 p.m., Cameron will talk about the book and what his intentions were when he wrote it. And then the next day, he will do a discussion about people that he's met throughout his career, and what kind of influences they had on him, which I think will just be a fun thing to get to know him a little bit better. We would appreciate your support, if you come to one of these, we would love to have had you read, that we would like for you to have read the book. But sometimes people come and hear about it, and then go home and read the book, because they like the discussion. So please come out and join us, and we appreciate your support of the Arts Council, and we look forward to seeing you at these events, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Ginger Collins, there we are. Thinking Maps.
Thinking Maps, yes, and it'll be another bookmark, so get ready. I'm Ginger Collins, thank you very much for your time this evening. I am president of Allegheny Writers, we're a creative writing nonprofit here in the county. And I'm here this evening with two of our board members, Elaine Moretz and Suzanne Irwin. Both were very involved in this project that we're going to introduce. It is in conjunction with Sparta School and the communities and schools of northwestern North Carolina. So we want to introduce Thinking Maps and the project Developing Allegheny Thinkers, because don't we all want to be a little better thinkers if we can? Basically, the description of the project is, it was initiated through parental request, which we think is really important, that there, that the parents are interested. And it's a collaboration, as I said, between Allegheny Writers, the schools, and community and schools. We did receive some funding, also from the Allegheny Community Foundation, and that will be used in conjunction with this project, Thinking Maps project. So the focus of the endeavor is to heighten the community awareness of Thinking Maps. And Amanda McCarron, who is the site coordinator for communities and schools of northwest North Carolina, will give you a sample. These are recognized, brain researched, visible patterns with a common visual language. So basically, what that says, guys, is you can put these up on the wall, and you can pretty much solve problems, work out situations, and it, it applies to all grade levels, all content levels, all academic groups, and all ethnic groups. Everybody can benefit using these organizational tools, and since this is something that's going to be the parents and the students, hopefully, it will let the parents have a better understanding of what the kids are learning in school, and do more work projects together. And, you know, stronger families mean stronger communities, and that's good for everybody, that benefits everyone. Along in your packet, along in your packet is also a flow chart, which is a sample of a Thinking Map. And this flow chart tells you about the project, when it starts, all the, all the things that are going to be included. And you'll see that we serve dinner to the families, we provide childcare, and there will be a translator available. So this is meant to, to reach all groups and benefit as a whole. I have uh, see, I have about a three-question limit on these things because when you start getting into the deep questions about the Thinking Maps, I have to refer to my group over here. So, does anybody have any questions?
Can I get enough of these to wallpaper my office?
We would love to have you come to-
Get all the help I can get, right?
We would love to have you come to the session, yes, and um, it, it, they're fun. They're fun. They, they get a lot of things done. So um-
Ginger, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, I mean, I think these are really interesting. So what kind of follow-up as far as like how they benefit? The, the, you know, student, parents, you know, um-
I can, I can show you the flow chart because with each one of the sessions, there's an initial, initial session on September seventeen with third through fifth graders. And um, and then there is a follow-up with the K-two and then the six-eight. They work on projects together and then at the end of the program, they, there are results. Elaine, I, that's the best I can do. Can you do any better there for me?
The, all of the teachers in Allegheny County were taught Thinking Maps and use Thinking Maps on a regular basis in the school. Therefore, the parents wanted to be able to know more how to help their children with the Thinking Maps and also use the Thinking Maps in home and planning budgets and vacations and things along those lines. So there's all kinds of adaptations for the Thinking Maps. And does that help with your question?
That really helps.
That's why I'm just- We'll get you some for the wallpaper. Do not worry. Do not worry. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Look for more information. I gave the packet to the newspapers.
Alright, we'll move along to uh, item E. Under General Business, we have uh, Ms. Karen Evans from the Finance, our Finance Officer. We have several items we're gonna need to cover. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Um, yeah, I have a couple of things tonight. The first thing that I have is a salary change. Um, as most of y'all were on the board when this was brought back in the late spring, I mean, early spring, late winter, that we had an employee who was hired in the inspections Department. The economy did a major downturn, so the employee moved to the maintenance department. But also with that move was going to keep his certification as an inspector to be able to do as a fill-in because we only do have one building inspector. At that time, that was approved, that was March of two thousand seventeen, to allow him a, to count his time from the time that he was employed instead of just the time he went to maintenance. And so in this year's um, budget preparation, when I was calculating everyone's salary, I missed his, going back to his original hire date. So there is um, information in your board packet that we're talking about six hundred and thirty-five dollars for salary and then along with the FICA and retirement, so it's a total of seven hundred and forty dollars and eighty-six cents. There is money um, available in the transfer facility budget because he has paid a portion out of the transfer facility budget. So my request tonight is um, literally to request approval to move the money from the transfer facility budget over to the maintenance budget to um, accommodate this salary request.
This is just basically cleaning up some paperwork-
Yes.
-that we missed from before.
Yes.
I would make the motion to accept your recommendation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Okay. There is no discussion, I guess we'll take a, have a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation. All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh.
Thank you.
Next item that I have on the agenda is regarding an invoice that I received um, the end of June for a, an agreement that we have with a bank over nine-one-one backup equipment. And um, as you can see, the invoice is seventy-eight thousand, four seventy-eight and change. The budgeted amount for this line item is thirty-seven, seven eighty-five. And this was something that had been previously discussed. And I know um, myself and Nick Hawks have discussed this and along with, we recall conversations with the prior county manager over this. So my question tonight is, we have this invoice that's been presented to us. We have the budgeted amount and obviously there's a difference. If y'all will recall from our budget meetings, we did set aside fifty thousand dollars in contingency to cover um, unexpected budget changes. So my question for you all tonight is um, will you want to take the difference between this out of the contingency funds and be able to go ahead and pay this invoice and honor our obligation with this? Or would you rather do a regular budget amendment like we've done in the past and take the money out of the general fund fund balance?
Hey, lem, before you ask that, what, what brought this, what happened, I think, with this is the first year payment was only half a payment.
Correct.
Okay, so when we started off with that, last, in last year's budget, that number got transferred over into this year's budget.
Correct.
And did not pick up on the full amount.
Yes.
And so then when the bill came in or the invoice came in for it, in the full amount, then that's where, that's how come the budget was short. It got missed. And on this note, I currently, anything that's coming in like this that got missed, this kind of gives me a little heartburn because we put in a lot of work in a budget trying to minimize. And we even did the work on the contingency, set it aside to keep from getting into our general fund. And so I've created a file for pre-considerations for next year's budget. I don't expect I'll be the one there, but I'll hand it off hopefully to somebody that's going to pull that out when they start their budget to pick up on any of these items that were overlooked this time. So hopefully there will be a tool in place to help with this. And as we move along, we should be able to compile that file and, and fill everything up so that we can catch it next time. Question?
Chairman, I'll make a motion. We uh, take the funds from the-
Question on the floor.
Sorry.
Have you been able to calculate exactly what our fund balance is now after all the June invoices were paid and?
No, not yet. I still have about seven um, electronic transfers that I'm still waiting on the dollar amounts to come in. Um, Jennifer and I were actually looking at that earlier today. And they're all revenues, so that will be, you know, to our good. Um, currently, we are pretty well through with the June invoices, but I still have several revenues coming in.
So we're still around twelve point eight or in that range?
Yes.
And what, or two meetings ago, we passed a resolution that we want to try to get back to twenty-five?
Yes, that's our goal.
So if this money comes out of the fund balance, then we're going the wrong way.
I agree. And that's why, one of the reasons that we set aside this fifty thousand in contingency, so things like this, we can take that out of that contingency and we're not touching the fund balance.
So what, what you're recommending is coming out of the contingency fund?
Yes, sir.
And this is just part of the mess we're trying to clean up from the last few months? That we've, we're finding out a lot of things, no. Correct?
Need a verbal answer?
Hi, um, yes.
I'll make a motion that we uh, use the funds in the contingency fund for this matter.
A second. So it's a motion that we take it, the recommendation of the Finance Officer and use the contingency monies. This will not leave us a lot, but we won't hit the general fund unless we have to this way. That's what we set this for. This was a tool. If we don't use it now, our auditor's gonna look at us and say, well, were they really serious when they set this up or, and we go straight to the general fund now? So I, I wholeheartedly agree. Any other comments? All in favor of that motion to take it from the contingency fund, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh. I, I just want to say, this time, y'all may hear a little bit of emotion in me that you typically don't hear. It's been a, uh, it's been an interesting, challenging journey in the last couple of weeks. I've put in a lot of time and I just uh, I'm a little bit of emotion here because, you know, I ran for this office and I came here because I care. And, and I appreciate this board's support through this. This is a, this is something we real, this is a season we're in that we really had not hoped for. But it was inevitable. And um, so just, just bear with us and I, I, I think, I gotta thank Drew over there for her support on putting all this stuff together. A lot in this agenda, so. Alright, next item.
The next thing I have is we need to update our BB and T signature cards. And I would like to request a change from our previous policy on this. And our, in the past, we've had the three people in the Finance Office along with the county manager and the chairman of the board on our signature cards. I would like to ask going forward that we would have um, the three people in the Finance Office and along with um, the county manager when someone gets in place and the chairman and the vice chairman. So this way, we would have a better opportunity to ensure that we're not going to be struggling trying to find someone to sign checks if we need to, checks at the last minute. Because our check signing policy is only one person from the Finance HR office can sign one line and then the other signature has to be the county manager or the board chair and now in this case, the vice chair as well. So that would like to ask um, approval to do that. And then also, I will be coming back with the same request once we do have a permanent county manager in place asking for this again.
Make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
Second to it.
Motion and a second to approve the recommended uh, signers for the s- bank cards. Any further discussion? All in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would like to state my appreciation to Commissioner Prince for being willing to do this because this is something new.
He's just a nice guy.
Yes, he is.
And he doesn't, also, and he doesn't know what he just signed himself up for.
No, I was, I was leaving that part out. He'll learn soon enough.
But I would say this, um, with two, it's, we have the two signature system, one from each side of the hallway. And if, if the manager's not here, it is for me. And there's times whenever it's, we've, we've got to be careful. This way with a third person, it could relieve some of that, so.
Correct.
I, I like that idea. And it's still you?
I had my last thing on the agenda. Before you, I have presented a resolution ratifying a loan that um, was obtained through Skyline National Bank. This loan was for a hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. And it was for um, our newest ambulance that we have and also a um, Dodge pickup for emergency management. This loan um, was done June the seventh, two thousand nineteen. And um, I don't know, I don't know where y'all want me to go with this on this resolution. I'll be glad to read the resolution or I'll, whatever y'all would like for me to do.
Do you now have a payment schedule?
Yes, I do. I have an amortization schedule.
Have the necessary steps been taken to, to assure that we're in compliance with state and county policy?
I have had conversations with our auditors, with the um, local government commission. And then also, I have spoken to the school of government all along this and ways what we need to do and what we need to get, make sure that we're in compliance and everything like that. And based upon my conversations with those three entities, the resolution in front of us is what has been recommended.
As well as Donna, I would add that.
Oh, yes, definitely. Donna's been right there with that.
This vote will bring us into compliance with all of those entities.
As much as it will bring us.
As much as possible. And, as we can.
Yeah.
Right.
Question?
Would it, or could we, or should we, pay off this loan and reapply for a new loan and try to get the best interest rates we can get and do it properly instead of how it was done? I know that you've checked with the school of government, but I, I would like to get the best interest that we could get.
And I totally understand that and I agree with you on getting the best interest. One of the problems though is if we repay the loan and turn around and, and go obtain a loan and get correct, you know, advertise for interest rates and get the best rate and so on and so forth. The problem is that we already have the equipment, we've already paid for the equipment and we're using the equipment. So now it's more, going to be considered more on the used side.
Used and they will not fully loan the entire value. Not only that, that's going to be a significant hit on our reserve funds, will it not, or our general funds?
Yes, because we would have to pay for, if we would flat out pay for the equipment to pay this loan off, you know, our fund balance is going to go down, you know, approximately a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. So that's going to be a huge hit to our fund balance. But then at the same time, you know, if y'all will recall, when we have capital equipment coming, we will do what's called a reimbursement resolution, which allows us to, to purchase the equipment throughout the course before we borrow the money. Well, we've already borrowed, that, we've already had the equipment, so therefore the reimbursement resolution wouldn't work in this scenario either.
It's just a big can of worms that we're trying to get out of.
Yes, sir.
And I, I feel your sentiment. I've, we've, I've wrestled and we've talked and we've talked and we've talked outside the county trying to figure out and, and that's, in my opinion, this is not the uh, the way it should have been, but in the circumstances we're in, I think this is the best way forward.
I believe that the audience and our TV audience has now had an epiphany.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second to approve the uh, resolution to ratify the loan. Any further discussion?
Let her get it up there.
Okay. All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh.
Thank you all for y'all's time tonight.
Thank you. And thank you for your efforts and your diligent work as we have moved through this.
And your ability to smile through all of it.
That's right. Yeah, exactly right.
Alright, at this time, before we go further, uh, we do have a public hearing and we need to probably move back up if, without objection, uh, for a road name, a new road name. And in your packet, you see an issue on that. Affects two property owners, both have consented and a new house is being built. So there's uh, basically a driveway with a second house, which requires a, a name and a nine-one-one address. So at this time, I will uh, call a public hearing for anyone wishing to uh, speak on this matter and invite you to come and do so. This is uh, if you can see, it's up off Kennedy Road, I think off of ninety-three. Landowners, or the home builder, I think, is uh, Kennedy. Robert Kennedy, who actually works upstairs. So seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. And the board is asked to take action on approving the road name.
I'll make a motion that we approve the naming of the road to Kennedy Ridge Lane.
Motion to approve.
Second to it.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, we'll drop back down now and finish out the, uh, rest of the agenda. We're at, uh, item number two, jail meals contract. This has, uh, this has been a less than desirable process. We, uh, in your bid packet, or in your board packet, we received three proposals. And at this time, I will open it up for conversation, motions?
Make a motion that we award the contract to Horizon Bistro.
I'll second to it.
There is a motion on the floor to award the contract to Horizon Bistro. Any further discussion?
In the last meeting, we voted based on the money would save the county, that we would go with the lowest bidder. Is that, why has that changed?
It hasn't changed. There's two competing bids that are of the same amount. I find it amazing that we have a previous bid that, uh, suddenly has been reduced to an amount that, uh, if we'd've gone with the previous bid, it would've cost the county over two-hundred thousand additional dollars.
There is a difference on special meals.
How many special meals do we have at any one time?
I don't, couldn't answer that question. All I'm saying, if we based it on money saved, then there is a difference.
It is based on money saved, but I also look that, I, if I remember correctly, the bid was seven dollars and nine cents for a regular meal. Suddenly, it drops down to five dollars and eighty-nine cents. I have a distinct impression that I'm being gouged.
In my opinion, that's business, and I think when they saw the need to change the price, they did the right thing. That's what I would do.
No doubt. Call the questions, sir.
Any other discussion?
One other comment I would make is, is, uh, I appreciate these other restaurants coming into the game, and I think taxpayers are gonna get the benefit of this. But I do like the idea that, that Horizon is, is spending their money locally, buying their groceries locally. I think that benefits the county, town, and then everybody.
Yeah. So we have a motion on the floor to award the contract to Horizon Bistro, and I think a second. No further discussion at this time. We'll, uh, ask for, all that's in favor of that, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Three, two. Alright. Next on the agenda, we have Nick Hawkes. This is a, uh, school equipment grant.
It is, it is, and, uh, I'm seeking, uh, a board move on this, um, hopefully to approve us to, uh, proceed with, um, submitting and hopefully receiving this grant. Um, I, you know, I come to you guys, uh, throughout the year, uh, with various grants and, and funding opportunities that we're always looking for. Uh, this is very similar to the standard, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar grants that, that I come to you each year with. Uh, most of the time, those grants are, are considered a, a block, a block grant, uh, and we're a sub-recipient of that funding through, uh, USD OJ by the Governor's Crime Commission. Uh, this, this grant is identical to that grant with the exception of two things. Um, this year, they, they made this grant specific to one topic, which is, uh, equipment for, uh, school security and safety. So, they changed that, and then they upped the grant to fifty thousand, so they essentially doubled it and then made it specific.
The best part is?
And the best part is, it is a zero percent match fund grant, so if we're approved for it, uh, it's essentially, they're cutting us a fifty thousand dollar check to purchase specifically, uh, uh, equipment, uh, for school security.
Make a motion that we authorize him to apply. No money, go for it.
Hope we see equipment that we were gonna get.
You, you've caught me.
So, uh, there, there's a few things, uh, that the sheriff had some thoughts on, and, and one of them would, would be a, a, a system that we would install in the schools, and, and I've spoken to Mr. Beasley about it already, and, uh, so I think he, he was willing to, uh, have his maintenance guys to the, to do the outfit install for us. It's a, it's a real sim- uh, simple, uh, um, install. So what it, it would be, there, there's metal buttons that would go in certain, uh, areas of the schools. Uh, the officers, as they're working throughout the day, uh, would, would carry a wand with them, uh, a- and, and they'd just wave the wand by these buttons. So it timestamps what time the officer's there, what time he's checking, a- and it just keeps everybody accountable.
Ability.
Yeah, it, it is, um.
Replaces the old watchman that we used to see going around with that big clock on his shoulder.
There you go. Yeah, yeah.
I would second that motion.
Any further discussion?
There's, there's numerous things, but that, that's one of the things.
Don't, don't say something that would talk us out of it.
Okay, alright. If y'all are good, I'm good.
A good salesman knows to be quiet once he's got a positive commitment.
I'm a talker, so, but I ain't gonna hush, so.
You need to get away from Brian a little bit. Alright, we do have a motion and a second. All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
And I think we are, oh, we got Steve Carrier back there.
I got a little piece to say about that, since I didn't get to talk as much before.
Of course.
Did we have a timer on him?
Yeah. Um, so tonight, we got with us all four of our, our school resource officers. And, um, I, I, I wanna introduce them all to you directly, uh, give you a little bit of background on them. Uh, honest to goodness, we got the cream of the crop right here. Uh, everybody knows Steve. Steve's a lifetime, uh, officer with Alleghen County Sheriff's Office, been serving since nineteen ninety-eight. Ninety-nine, I was close. Uh, and all of his time has been here in the county working, uh, either narcotics, general crimes investigations, uh, numerous years on patrol, so he has done everything within the building, including detention officer. So he, he's done anything in that office. Uh, the next guy here with him, a- and, and also, uh, Steve is our sergeant within the schools, so these guys will, will report to Steve. Uh, next guy, uh, everybody probably in this room knows Tyler Show. Tyler's lifetime law enforcement, as long as he's been in, in law enforcement, which is about ten years, uh, here in the county, uh, was with Sparta PD until-
He start when he was five?
Yeah, 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 yeah. Five, and he's fifteen now, so. So, uh, Tyler's got a lot of years on. He's worked patrol, uh, ju- uh, general crimes detective, done some narcotics work. Um, he's got a good background, a- and we're blessed to have him. Uh, next to him?
The way he looks, you could try, he, he could, could've also looked for underage drinking.
Uh, yeah, and so, so ma- maybe before everybody gets to know him in the schools, we can use him as an undercover, uh, school, uh, child or something. We'll, we'll figure out something.
He blushes real well, too.
Yeah, I'll, yeah, yeah. Uh, next to him, that's Lloyd Terry. Uh, Lloyd, uh, is, uh, retired, uh, State Bureau of Investigation. He was at ASAC with the Bureau for a number of years, uh, served them honorably. We've worked numerous cases over the years with Lloyd as, as an SBI agent. Uh, we was fortunate enough to, uh, get him after his retirement. Uh, he's worked with Surrey County Sheriff's Office as well, and Cleveland County Sheriff's Office as well. Um, Lloyd's a talker, so he may wanna, wanna tell you something, but, uh-
Like him coming out of retirement around here.
We do, and, and we're thankful to have him. Uh, he's very knowledgeable, uh, a- and his experience is, is the whole gamut of, of law enforcement in general, so we're blessed to have him. He, he's helped us in a pinch the past couple of weeks, so when he's not in the schools, uh, he's a perfect fit in our detective office. And then on the end, we have Mr. Scott Bailey. Scott, uh, we're very fortunate to have Scott. He, he actually, we hired him on before the resource officer positions were, were, uh, were given by you guys. Uh, he started out working for us temporarily in the jail. Scott has, uh, about fifteen years law enforcement. I think he started with Mitchell County Sheriff's Office, uh, a number of years ago. Went to work for Wilkes County Sheriff's Office, was a K-nine handler for Wilkes. He became an overseas contractor, so he was working, uh, some of the paramilitary organizations over there, running, running bomb dogs and stuff. So he's been to Iraq and Afghanistan, and, um, uh, we're blessed to have him. And so, uh, I, I really think, uh, w- we could not have hired better law enforcement officers for these positions.
Who's gonna be at which school?
Uh, of course, Steve is still at the high school. He'll stay there. We're gonna put Tyler Show at Spar- at Sparta Elementary. Uh, Mr. Terry Lloyd will be at Glade Creek Elementary, and Scott Bailey will be at Piney Creek. And I'm gonna shut up and turn this over to Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you all for inviting us down today. Um, I would like to say, Mr. Bailey is, uh, did serve honorably in the Marine Corps. So, uh, just let, uh, two of you guys know that.
Score.
Yeah.
Outstanding.
Yes. Uh, we had a great, uh, two thousand eighteen school year. We did a lot of, uh, with Nick kinda kidding Tyler a little bit, we did do a active intruder drill this year at the high school, and we used one of our young-looking detectives to come into the school and, and kinda walk around, see if he gives notice or whatnot, and, uh, that went very well. We learned a lot. Uh, we, uh, performed several lockdown drills. That went very well. We are learning. It is a learning process, uh, for all of us, and more we do it, the better we get at it. We did have a, uh, did charge a few at the high schools this year. Uh, I will give you some stats from last school year to this previous school year. Uh, the two thousand seventeen school year, we had, um, three drug charges. We had twenty-one fights, uh, two thefts, and three property damage. This past school year, we had, uh, three drug possessions, uh, five fights, uh, zero larcenies, and one alcohol possession. That is from the high school alone. Elementary level, we had Officer Epps, uh, charged one for assault, and then charged, uh, we had a trespasser on school grounds. Uh, he was notified of a individual that wasn't supposed to be on school grounds. He went out of the school, approached the invi- individual, and the individual fled. He chased him all the way to the, uh, Speedway and apprehended him, made arrests. Uh, the individual did have a concealed weapon on him, charged him with that. So, having a school resource officer at these schools is very important. You never know who's coming across your property. Uh, we are there to protect, and, uh, we, with these young men, I wouldn't say young men, but we are all here to serve our children. I have three in the school. Um, I love all of our kids. We, uh, we have the most excellent children in the state, I believe. They amaze me every day. Uh, I have students, brings me water, brings me candy. Uh, I have parents, I'm out every morning. The first face, face they see every morning is mine. I greet them every morning with a hello, how are you? Good morning. And, uh, I'm out there during the, the heat, I'm out there during the cold, I'm out there during the rain, I'm out there for them. I even had one parent, I have excellent parents, uh, here in Alleghen County. Had a parent come through, dropped their kid off, left and came back and brought me a cup of coffee one morning. It was, it was, it was cold, and she's like, I know you're freezing. Here's you some coffee. So we have excellent, excellent kids, excellent parents. Uh, I'm blessed to be working with our children here in Alleghen County. Uh, and I'm really looking forward to, uh, the upcoming school year and, uh, and seeing good things happen.
Chairman, I do have a question. How many times did you run the drug dog through?
Four times.
Were your drug arrests, uh, as a result of the drug dog?
Yes, sir.
So they were, uh, can I assume that the drugs were in their wall lockers?
It was all in vehicles.
All in vehicles, so you're doing the parking lots, too?
Yes.
Makes me feel better. Welcome, gentlemen. It's good to have you. I like to see gray hair.
Uh, Steve?
Yes, sir.
What happens on a sick day when one of the officers is out sick at one of the schools? How do you cover that school?
Right, uh, and, and I, and we have addressed that. Uh, I don't know if, some of you know, it's, every year, I do like, uh, to take off a week during deer season. I'm a, I'm a huge deer hunter.
Am I not surprised?
Yes, uh, so when one of us is out, we will rotate. Uh, I'll have a, if I'm out, I'll have somebody there, uh, on a regular basis. Sparta School is our largest elementary school, so I'll have somebody there on a regular basis. There'll be somebody at the high school on a regular basis. Pine Creek and Glade Creek, if somebody's there, we'll be rotating and doing as much coverage as we can. Uh, also, uh, if one of us is not there, the patrol will be coming through as well. And during our normal routine, uh, in our community watch, uh, they'll be coming through and, and especially if, if we're not there, they're gonna stop by and check things out.
Do the officers have a list of people who are restricted from coming on school property, pedophiles, uh, abusers?
Uh, we, we all have a list of sex offenders, uh, of the county. Uh, we did have an investigation this year from my high school that list, uh, led into arrest of a sex offender being on school property. Um, so yes, they, they are aware of that situation. Um, if there's a specific order that is ordering somebody not to be on a property, I would share that information with our patrol officers. So everybody would be on the same page.
Thank you. Thank all of you.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to comment. You've got some fantastic numbers there that proves SRO's work, and I'm thankful that all schools have that now, and I welcome you guys to the county.
Do you, there is a, a specialized training that is offered. Have, have they been through that?
Uh, two out of three has, and, uh, uh, the other one that has not will be going through it. It's just, uh, they're such an overwhelmed of school resource officers, it's hard to get them in right now. Uh, so when the next available class is open, he'll be going through, so.
Having three of you that have, you can mentor anywhere you need to, so.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much. Welcome, gentlemen. Number five. We, we feel better.
Bring fifty thousand back next time, Nick.
No match.
Alright, at this time, we have, uh, we'll move to number five. We have a, uh, we had an offer on our loader at the transfer station, and that went into, that was an offer with a deposit, and that went into the, uh, upset bid process. We didn't get any more, and brought it back to the board for consideration of whether you wanna sell it for the twenty-four thousand that was offered. It has already been declared surplus, so, um.
We followed all the right procedures.
Yes.
Advertised good, and just got the one bid.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the, uh, offer. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, next in your packet is a, um, solid waste. It's for a business. And in essence, what happened was there was an error, and there was four months billed too much. You see the receipt on the front page of fifty-nine, and that has been reconciled and corrected. But we do need to take action on that item to refund the customer.
Make a motion that we refund the sixty-six dollars, sixty-eight cents requested.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the refund of sixty-six, sixty-eight. All in favor, make it known by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, also included in your board packet is the contract for the fire district drawing. I will say- I will say there was a couple of questions. I did have Daniel look at this. Him and Wendy will be involved in working with the folks at the council of governments. And if you noticed, the question was under four B, talking about the mileage, one and a half, two and a half, five miles. Well, we're in six-mile districts, as we understand. But I asked what the additional cost is for that, and he said it's, I was looking for it here. Like a hundred and twenty to a hundred and eighty dollars range. Said, once they get all the work done, it was very easy to generate those mileages, and it would be more thorough information to have. So it's, it's, other than that, the only other question I did ask him was the timeframe. You'll notice under item, under number seven, time of performance. The, these will be, it'll be January when these will be produced for public hearings. So obviously, we had kinda taken action on this and thought this was actually further along than what it is, but I got this in, I think my week before, I think my first week was, this was produced and discovered and gotten to this point. Any other questions?
More revelations.
It does, it is at the price that we budgeted, so we're good there.
Make a motion that we approve the contract.
There's a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Okay. G I S out there. All right, all in favor of that motion, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five oh. All right, next we do have, we have received an offer, an unsolicited offer, on a lift van that is out of service, and it is at the, in the parking lot at the B D C. The offer, the amount is, what page is that on? Seventy-three. Bear with me. Was thirteen hundred?
Where's the offer from?
The offer. Is the offer actually, what page is the offer on? Or did we include it in there? Okay. It's thirteen, it's for thirteen hundred, and the, the gentleman is, can't think of his name, but he is a paraplegic, I mean, yeah. Amputee, there we go.
Do I need to excuse myself from the vote?
I don't think so. You're not gonna get any personal gain from this, so. It's, the question is, is we do have an offer of thirteen hundred dollars with a proper deposit. We, I told him if the board chose to take action, that it would, they may wanna let it go into the upset bid process, which I would recommend that we do. And, or if, but I did tell him that we actually have a surplus sale coming up. Generally, we don't have one this close, so the board may wanna let it go to there. So it's just whatever the board wants to do. If we do, we actually do need to declare it surplus property first. And regardless of whether we accept the offer, if we don't accept this offering, move with it, we're gonna be putting it in the surplus sale in September anyway. So I, I would ask if, any other comments or questions on the declaring it surplus?
You said the gentleman that's made the offer is an amputee?
Double.
Double amputee. Double amputee?
Yeah.
Is a veteran?
His legs.
I don't know, I don't know.
Is this for his personal use or do we have that knowledge?
It's personal.
Personal use.
Yeah. So what I understand.
I will make the resolu, I will make the motion that we declare it surplus property, which I believe we have to do before we can consider an offer.
Well, we could consider the offer, but, but we need, this is the right order, so. Let's, so there's a motion on the floor to declare the van surplus property.
And to put it into the upset bid or is that separate?
That's separate.
Okay.
All we're doing now is just considering to declare it surplus.
I'd second that.
Okay. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Now, the next item to consider is the offer. It is, as I say, it's thirteen hundred. We have a deposit. If we accept it, I would recommend that we let it go into the upset bid. It would be advertised for the seven days.
I agree with that. I like that motion.
I'll second that motion.
So there's a motion and a second to accept the offer, allowing it to go into the upset bid process, the offer of thirteen hundred dollars.
That's our finish.
The upset bid. All in favor, we did have a second, right? Motion and a second. All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. Thank you. And on page seventy-four, seventy-five, mentioned the surplus sale coming up on September the seventh. There will be vehicles, guns. I haven't seen the list. I think there was an email circulated late this afternoon, but I didn't have time to open it. They were trying to get us a whole list of guns out there, so usually that brings folks out to, to auction, so.
It's a Saturday.
That is a Saturday, the seventh of September. The contract is for five hundred dollars or seven percent, whichever is higher. There is a, the, the former manager had, the school is gonna be partnering, are gonna be involved with this. But they're gonna be there, they're gonna have their own staff there. Anything they sell, they're gonna handle the paperwork and, and help the auctioneer. And we will take in all the money and refund them less the cost after the end of it. That's the way our finance director wanted to handle it.
We don't have a list yet of what's gonna be auctioned.
It's, it's being developed. We'll have it mid, mid-month. Next, next meeting, we'll have a, a full list of those items. But this is the contract for that. Wanted to go ahead and ask the board to consider it.
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the surplus auctioneer contract. All in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll move along to item F, consent agenda items. Any questions on that? There are. John, do you have a question in there?
No, I was gonna say I have no questions, sir.
We have, let me get down to it. On page eighty-five. The vehicle. And the, there was a, a challenge for the value. It was assessed at sixty thousand. And as they do, the tax office looked, it, looked at it, and Rita has recommended fifty-one.
I have no problems.
Be good with that? Okay, as recommended. Okay, and the very next page, we have one, another one. Assessed value, and these assessed values come out of the state system. So whenever they actually enter it, it produces a value that doesn't always match up. And here, the recommended amount is forty thousand, one twenty-five.
I have no problems with the recommended value. For the assessor recommendation.
For a vehicle. It must not be a county commissioner. All right, I think those were all the individual items that I wanted to ask about, except there is, under her items, the very last item is F. We had an elderly person who missed a deadline, and there's a, that's on page eighty-seven, the reason for it. There was some, I think, change of residence, mail didn't follow, looked like. And the application, from what I understand, is in compliance. It's just late. It's reading here. I think it meets all of the requirements, and this board can approve it. If you have questions, we probably need to delay it till next meeting on that.
I have no questions, sir.
Any other questions?
I make a motion. Second that motion.
Approve the consent agenda as recommended. Let's put it that way. And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five oh. All right, item G, public comments. Anyone that would like to address this board on any matters may come and do it now. You can do it at that mic if you want to, or at the podium, either one. We do have a three-minute clock, and I'm gonna set it for that. Sounded like you might want to cover more than that.
Maybe not.
Okay.
We'll get through this relatively quickly.
Okay.
My name's Fang Alfred. Some of you guys may remember me from the last meeting or not. Just wanted to give an update on the noise situation at Glade Creek Community Building. And it has not changed. In fact, it's gotten worse. We have other issues we're trying to deal with now because of some carelessness on the fire department's part. And I'm not at liberty to discuss that right now, but it involves possibly some contaminated water at both my residences and/or possibly the community building itself. So, but that's not the real reason why I'm here. Mr. Irwin, on the last meeting, you had mentioned, and I think some of the closing statements were toward the close of the meeting, that you wanted to look at some of the old ordinances. And I have one right here that I very would, desperate would like for you guys to take a look at. And it's, was filed two thousand nine, November ninth, two thousand five, eight twenty fifty-six A M. And it's concerning high-impact land use, polluting for industries. So I can give you guys this, you could take a look at it, or I can give you the reference number so you can look it up. There are three or four things in this article that pertain to what I'm dealing with. And this is not something that, that we've been dealing with from day one since we moved in our house. It started around two thousand seventeen and has progressively gotten worse since. So the intent for the community building was for fellowship, for churches to come and visit and have a place to meet, so on and so forth. I don't think when the folks that built that building, that the tent was to have four-foot-tall speakers that are producing decibel levels that you could hear from more than a quarter-mile away. Now, keep in mind, I have a residence that is more than three hundred feet away, and I have another residence that is thirty feet away. Both are dealing with the same issue. It's extremely, extremely difficult to live there. So if board could, take a look at this and see what we can do about an amendment to include that type facility, because from what I understand, Glade Creek Community Building is incorporated. It is a five oh one C, but it is a corporation. Now, where they have, the fire chief is an employee. He says he's an employee. I don't know. But that's my buzzer, that's my time. Any questions?
What is the ordinance that you're citing, sir?
It is, I can bring it to you, let you look at it.
The high-impact land use is polluting industries ordinance. Thank you.
I'm, right church, wrong pew. I brought, I brought the property rights protection ordinance.
Okay. Well, I had that one, too. So, anything other, any other questions?
Has Donald looked at this or?
Actually, um. I didn't.
She wrote it.
She wrote it.
She wrote it in two thousand five, I would suppose. So, and, in two thousand five, I don't think anybody had any idea that we were gonna be dealing with this sort of issue. Seventy-five.
Put that mic down just a little bit. There you go.
Does that work? That's, that's good.
I had a sound engineer class one time. That's all I remember.
Okay. All right. Well, you know what? I'm a sound engineer, too, for the last two, three years, so.
Not by choice.
Not by choice, but.
By necessity.
Yeah, we, you know, we're trying to work through this, and we tried to work with those folks out there, and all of our efforts are falling on deaf ears, and.
And I will say that it, it is actually on the board in the county manager's office as an item that's front and center.
Okay.
So if, as I, I have had bigger fires.
I got you.
I know in your case, this is about as big as it gets.
I got you.
But it is on my list to get to.
I certainly appreciate it.
And try to start seeing what we can do.
I certainly appreciate it.
Any promises whatsoever, because me and the county manager has arguments once in a while, and it slows production down. So, so on a good day, maybe we can get through that.
Okay, okay. I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. I did, I did actually address H R on that issue. She said she didn't have any rules right now pertaining to the fights between the board chair and the county manager, so. No signal movement. We'll close that. Move to interim county manager comments. In your packet, we have, this is no action is requested. This is basically for information. There is another AT&T tower that looks like is gonna be coming. The process for that, if you're not familiar with it, it will go to our planning board. It'll actually go to the plan, planner first. He will review it, and there's two permits that'll happen, a process, two stages. The first stage will be to the, to the planning board. If they approve it, it'll come to us to finalize it. And the reason, well, I don't know, this was actually on the, kinda on the agenda from the former manager. I assume he wanted to let this board know, because we all are aware of AT&T towers that went up and never got activated yet. There are three towers currently that our equipment is going in on. I had that conversation with Travis today. Of those six towers, I think we have, so they are heading towards making them live. But I hope the planning board, y'all may wanna speak to them and maybe make them lean on them pretty heavy about making them active.
They meet Monday at six o'clock?
The planning board?
Yes.
Well, actually, the, the planner, Travis, has not actually received the application yet. And once he, he's expecting it any day. And so we're thinking, I think he said it would be for, for the planning board in September. I think Donna, Donna serves as, as the lawyer, legal counsel for them as well, so. So they'll get it first, and then if they, if it passes through there, then it'll, I think, come to us as the final say-so.
The planning board is scheduled to meet this coming Monday.
No, they only meet if they need to.
They're not scheduled to meet on the twelfth at six o'clock?
If they have, they haven't told me yet, just put it that way.
They meet on an as-needed, every month if they need to.
If, if there's a, an application for conditional use permit, they'll meet, but I have not been made aware of one for next week.
Yeah. So unless they produce it...
Uh, I've just had a citizen tell me they were planning to be there Monday, on the twelfth at six o'clock.
I'll check with Travis, 'cause they needed to let me know if they're planning on meeting next week.
We can, we can find that out tomorrow and get it out.
If you could let us, let me know, or something, I can call these people and tell them yea or nay.
I just texted Travis, I hear back from him.
Okay.
Okay, next on the list is, uh, liability and property claims. We get a quarterly report. I'll be honest, I haven't had a lot of time to, to dive into this. We have, uh, shows us our open and our active claims. We have, uh, one sheriff's department, I think someone hit a deer. Um, and then an incident in a vehicle from the health department. And then there was another incident where someone, I think, slipped and fell. Uh, it was reported, just in case, and nothing, uh, no action or no, we were not liable or negligent. And so, that's what that is. And on that note, it's not in your packet, but I do have, for, we're in the North Carolina Health Insurance Pool. I did wanna report that this year's, uh, claims loss ratio is the best it's ever been that, in Karen's day. So, last year, we were at a fifty-four percent, and this year, we're at sixty-four percent. Uh, and, and that is, the higher that number, the better it is, our loss to our, to the revenue ratio. So, I thought that was pretty good news, uh, on our claims. In your packet is also, uh, June and July building permit reports. Um, and had a conversation with Travis there, he's pretty active, and it's continuing on an upward incline. And there's the numbers you can read if you can't sleep tonight. Uh, they are getting busier, and, uh...
He's still able to handle all the...
Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem there. Yeah. Did wanna mention the, uh, senior center groundbreaking. We have it lined up for eight fifteen, August the fifteenth at nine AM. This is a groundbreaking ceremony.
August the what?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth.
Put that on your calendar. Nine o'clock.
Nine.
Yeah.
We're, what will happen that day? Are they, are we gonna start moving dirt, or?
Oh, you can move with a shovel.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so we're not moving much.
When do we expect a, a start date on construction?
It's real close. It may not be far after that.
Okay.
Um, by our next, by our mid-month meeting, we'll have an answer, probably pretty close. We, uh, we tried to get a joint meeting with the school board in August, but the dates just wouldn't work out. Uh, it's kinda like, uh, herding cats. So, we're looking at September the twentieth, or the twenty-seventh. Um, would ask you to circle the twentieth, that's the first one we're gonna try for. And I don't need an answer right now, if you wanna look at that, if you know, that's fine, if not. And that will be a joint meeting here, and we will host them.
What were your proposed dates?
The September twentieth? Or the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh, I think, is what I sent the email.
Well, now, that, the first month was August. The, whenever I sent out an email, I was looking, asking for August dates.
Okay, I'm, I'm out on the twentieth of September.
The twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh's good.
Anybody else on the twenty-seventh?
Uh, give me a moment, I gotta...
Keep sliding it over.
Yeah.
While you're looking at that, um...
I can do twenty-seventh.
Drew, are you good on that day?
September twenty-seventh, I'm good.
Yes.
I'm good.
All right. I think I got a nod from Commissioner Osber. Okay. In the affirmative. Also wanted to update the board, I discovered the, uh, if you'll remember, we had a discussion about an, an action to request in full the twenty thousand dollars for the, uh, grants supermarket. And I wasn't sure the status of that, so I re-sent it out by email. I had two email addresses, one for, um, Ron and Ron Martin President, and another one. And I copied them both on it, and I also copied Donna. I would, if I don't hear anything back, I would think we would probably need to do a certified letter, and I would like to ask her, Donna, if she would consider doing that, if the board is okay with it.
Yes, yes.
Because I, I haven't gotten a response, and this was sent July thirtieth. So, if board's okay, we'll let her do that. And next is the, uh, timeline for, in the process for hiring my replacement. This is the most exciting part of the meeting. We do, I do have a, uh, a worksheet I wanna hand out. Y'all can take it and work through it, I'd thought about us meeting back together, and if we need to do that, we can. But I'd like to ask, in the meantime, to take this, work through it, turn it back in to HR. We will compile the data. And if your feedback says we need to, to meet as a board, we'll have to, of course, call a public meeting. But I would ask that you could get this back, hopefully in just two or three days, if you can. We get this back, April will develop a profile, we'll be able then to go out and advertise. We are going to advertise everything that we advertised in the last, last time, which was, of course, the local paper, the, uh, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners publication, NC Works Online, the League of Municipal, municipalities, and then the Virginia County Commissioners Association. And then we're gonna be probably adding, uh, services from Indeed to expand. And our budget, I think we said it was around five hundred dollars, which was, which is actually less than it was the last time, according to our records. We will plan to advertise for ninety days or until filled.
Question, why do we have to advertise for ninety days instead of sixty days?
Well, we just keep it running until, until we fill it. And then we can cut it off, if we fill it, we stop it.
Oh, okay, but we're gonna start the process before ninety days?
Oh, y- yeah, we're gonna start the process, like, maybe next week.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. So, um, and as I say, that will be the, uh, the timeline, and then once we get the applications in. Last time, if memory serves me right, we had around thirty applications, and we didn't go out on Indeed. I wouldn't mind seeing a hundred. It's a lot of work, but I think the county would benefit from the more we get. And once we get those back, they will be, there will be a process by which they will be, uh, reviewed. We'll all be involved in that process, and then determine some finalists and start interviewing. And we, uh, we'll figure out the timeline on that as we get closer. Donna, is that, any, any other memories come to mind on that process?
Really?
Okay. So, the sooner we can get your response back here, the sooner we can get the profile built and get it advertised, the sooner we can, uh, get you a, a real manager. I have a couple of other items that are not on my list, but, uh, I thought they were noteworthy. We did, if you'll remember, we did, uh, stopped with this new communications, we were renting a tower from Skyline. And, uh, that lease was set up with a six-month separation notice. Um, we no longer need it, the, uh, the action had not been taken from the county to stop that. So, if we stopped it now, we'd still have to pay it for six months at, at fourteen hundred dollars a month. We, you have not because you asked not. We went and asked, and they waived the six months for eighty-four, so we saved eighty-four hundred dollars. And that, that kudos goes to Ms. Karen. Um, I delegated that task, and she gladly took it on and asked, and so that is behind us. And I did get a report from, all of you remember, Megan, we, she came before us and did the skills and drills. And, and here's a report, I'm not gonna go through it all, but it was very positive, and then I had a one-on-one with her to get a little feedback. And it sounds like it was a great week, um, a lot of participation, a lot of positives out of that. And of course, that was, uh, the, the kids were fed through the school, lunch, I mean, breakfast and lunch. And, uh, she, I think she did well with it, and that was, uh, had a couple of good volunteers to help them. And that's all I have on the managers' comments.
I could correct one thing, there is a planning board meeting Monday night, but there is no public hearing.
Planning board meeting Monday night?
But no public hearing.
No public hearing. Do you know what's on the agenda?
No, that was just a text message from Travis.
Six...
Six o'clock, I think.
Yeah.
Six.
All right, at this time, we'll move down to, uh, county commissioner comments, and I'll start down here to my far right with Commissioner Osber.
I'd just like to commend Miles Jobfun for the job they do and, and helping business startups. I think that's a good, good thing for the county. And I'd also like to comment on the SROs, I think that's, uh, I think we made the right decision with going with two more for the county. And, and I think they've got a good choice of individuals to, to fulfill that position and do that program. Looking forward to the upcoming Pumpkin Festival, been a lot of work going on put into that, and I believe that's gonna be a good thing, and, and, and the other festivals go along with it. I think it'll be a, a good, a good plus for the county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Bobby Irwin.
The, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, the board for allowing Drew to put these motions up on the board. I think, I hope we can keep that up. Uh, I appreciate it, and I think a lot of people can understand more what we're voting on. The other thing is, um, I have quite a few things here that I couldn't get on the agenda that I wanna discuss. It's an update on the pool as to the slides, the saltwater system. And do we have a written pool policy as to how the pool is run in general? Closing times, um, now we're looking at possibly running the pool in Septe- or I guess in August and September without a lifeguard. This was a recommendation pulled about from the previous county manager that the insurance company recommended that we not have a lifeguard. And also, I'd like to know where we are on the disc golf, and also, where, where is it located? How do you get to it? How do you start? How do you utilize the system? Next thing is the Lions Club Pavilion. What I'm understanding is it's a split responsibility for the upkeep of the grounds and the building. The school does some part, the county does some part. Now, this is, uh, one of these projects like the fairgrounds where it's a split responsibility. I think one organization should run it, either whoever that organization is, not be split two different ways. The best I could tell, the grounds were only mowed one time. It's up until the day before it was used last week. There, moving on to the fairgrounds, the same thing goes, some agency needs to be in charge of it. Questions that I have, who pays the electric bill when the campers hook up to these systems? Uh, if you were at the, at the fiddler's convention, there was umpteen people running extension cords to their vans, to their different music hookup machines. There again, who pays the water bill? All of the water spigots were used, somebody has to pay that water bill. Also, who carries the insurance? Especially at the fiddler's convention, when we had a major leak of water, and the electric box was right part of that leak. People were standing in water, hooking up and unhooking these electric boxes, and fixing, uh, circuit breakers when they were tripped. I don't know a lot about electricity, the water and... I'm curious is about the, the danger that that proposes. The Emerson Black Building needs a lot of work. I think since, uh, the maintenance department has taken over, uh, doing the maintenance there, that it is, it has improved. It has improved quite a bit, but there's a long way to go. And as I mentioned before, I think Donna has to be more involved with, with whatever she thinks is potentially legal to keep us out of, out of trouble, that's, that's her job. And I think we need to be more involved in getting any information to her that we think that she needs. And I see we have a closed session, uh, part of that's for personnel, I have stuff for that. I would like the department heads, I think that's something the board needs to get together and discuss, but personally, I would like to see all department heads start now at looking at ways to cut next year's budget two to four percent to try to get us back into some solid financial grounds. We are, we're on shaky grounds right now. Again, I'd like to see, uh, possibly a workshop for the commissioners in the next few weeks. Maybe just a day or a half a day, if, if we can, if we can, uh, arrange that. There again, uh, the, another thing on the swimming pool is, the close date right now is the end of September. But there again, that will be without, um, without a lifeguard. Thank you.
Mr. Prince.
Uh, comments on the Jell-O food. I support decisions we've made, however, I'm very dissatisfied with how it came about. It was an ugly process. Uh, my vote the whole time has been on, uh, voting for who I believe could stay in business, could provide the service ongoing, that we would not be in jeopardy should that vendor fail. Uh, I stayed with that decision. Uh, your decisions were based on price. Um, the fact that the original vendor lowered his price, I think, was a business decision they made. I didn't make that decision. Uh, but it goes against what you said you were gonna vote for, and that's the low cost. And one part in the, in the bid was that it was lower by special foods. How many there are, I don't know. I can't answer that. All I can answer is, did we do the right thing for the right reason? And I personally don't believe we did, that's all I got.
Thank you. Commissioner John.
Uh, yes, uh, Drew, if you would bring up, start right there. One of the things that I've been noticing and I've been hearing since we've raised the prices at the transfer station, it's something that I feel, felt would start, and it has started. Now, we are getting junk on the side of the road. Donna told me tonight that, uh, a friend had, had mentioned that it came off her property one day. There's three mattresses... There's three mattresses on the side of the road. Somebody had dumped them. Town of Sparta has an ordinance for dilapidated buildings, and they're gonna clean up the world. Well, let's be honest, they got the two places that they had their hat set for cleaned up, and now they just stopped. This is Hendrix Road. That's an abandoned camper, brush pile in front of it. Next picture, please. This is one of the many cars that are in front of the next building, if you would please. Notice the disrepair, the leaves and everything else is wood trees, ready to grow out of the rain gutters next. Some more of the vehicles that are abandoned parked in the, in front of the house. Now, this is beside of a house that's rather kept up. How would you like to try and sell your house with this beside of it? Next, this is a father range. Now, I took these pictures from my vehicle from the road. So nothing's being done, nothing's gonna happen. Now, this is down in Ennis. Go back one, please. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead and, and go forward. This is a property down in Ennis. This is a house. It is within a thousand feet of an occupied house, but I believe it's the owner's house. Next. Real nice. Now, all these vehicles are full of trash. This is what you see as you drive up to the property. We really want to bring tourists in. Now, I fought against the, the ordinance because I didn't think that it was proper, but we're gonna have more instances of this if we're gonna have to raise our tipping fees at the transfer station. Next, this is the same property. Look at all the abandoned vehicles in the back. Now, we do have a property use ordinance, but we've got to prove that he's selling parts off of these vehicles. If he's selling parts off the vehicles, it's a business. By the ordinance, I put up a fence. Nobody's doing anything. I don't even know who's supposed to enforce this, other than the planning board, but somebody's got to go out and look at the property and see if it's in disrepair, meets the requirements. I'm not looking at the houses. Now, this is a very interesting one. This is Walnut Creek Branch Road. This gentleman has been banned from the transfer station because he was stealing aluminum, bringing it back and putting it on his property. You know, if he'd at least sell it, perhaps we wouldn't see this from the road again. It gets better.
It gets worse.
Well, it does get worse. So, how'd you like to live beside this? Now, the health department has been called, but the health department, department can't do anything. The last one, if we could, another one? This property is two hundred yards outside of the Sparta city limit. What you can't see there is a large number of vehicles that have been taken back there and parked. Now, you're seeing some of the trash that has been piled up. Next one. You can see some more. Next one. It's amazing. We charge for a couch at the transfer station. So what you do, you take it on your lot, now this is a gentleman's lot, and you pile it up because you don't want to pay the money to have it taken away at the transfer station. Now, the, I ran into this one, what got me started was whenever I went to see a classmate, seventy-year-old widow. Heat eating her yard. It looks real good. She's got to live beside this. Dogs were tearing into trash bags and pulling out clothes and various other articles and dragging it all over the place. She related to me that she had taken six thirty-two gallon trash bags to the dump and dumped it out of herself whenever they were gone, just so that she wouldn't have the dogs ripping it up and running it. You know, I hate to say it, and I hate to go back, but it has reached a point where love thy neighbor doesn't mean ju- dumping your dead gone trash next door and making a filthy mess. The health department can't do anything. I think it's about time that we look at an ordinance. If we have an ordinance for dumping of materials such as this, if we can identify the dumper in the ordinance, we specify that they will pay for the county employees that clean it up. They will pay for every mile that we have to drive to take it to the transfer station. They pay a set amount for the use of a county vehicle to, to take it there, and they pay the tipping fee. And if it's a property owner, we'll put a lien against them, and whenever they sell the property in the year twenty-two oh three, we, we might be able to get the money. The sad part about it is any ordinance that we, that we pass, the maximum fine that we can do is fifty dollars. Fifty dollars, that's nothing anymore, but hopefully, our learned counsel will determine if we can charge them a cleanup fee and get that. This is ridiculous. This is, I know Larry preached to me, and I wanted to back him. I didn't whenever he came up. Now I'm beginning to regret that decision. Folks, you beat the dead horse. You didn't let good things go. This can't go on in this county. We've got to do something about it. So in the future, I'll be making a proposal that we look into an ordinance to this effect, so learned counsel, if you will, start doing the preliminaries to see if we can hammer them for the cleanup cost, I would appreciate it.
John, could, could I?
Yes.
If, if you could, if you have time, come to the planning board meeting Monday night at six.
Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Eighteen thirty hours, I'm glad. You want me to bring my thumb drive?
Some of this will be addressed at that planning board, but I, I've got hundreds of pictures that you can add to, to what you've got.
Well, yeah, I, I remember George, this is why I took the pictures, and then I went, I, I got a call from a citizen saying that there was a problem over at the transfer station, and as I was driving in, I looked to my left and I looked to my right at those abandoned buildings. I'm saying, it's appropriate.
That first, first set of slides are close to it that you went to, is right in the town.
It is in the town limits.
And they addressed that last year, and it was cleaned up one time.
Yeah.
And now it's back as bad, if not worse than it was last year.
The reason why.
Cleaning, it was not cleaned up.
Look at the property around it.
It's beautiful.
Everybody's house is, is in very nice order. And you talked about the property values going downhill, but stuff like that causes that.
Now, my question to the attorney, does the county ordinance supersede the town ordinance, or we have no way of enforcing anything?
Most of the county ordinances carve out the town and the ETJ, saying that you don't have authority to act in those areas.
But the county carves that out in the.
In the passenger.
In the, in the package, so if we choose not to.
Still think that the town, needs to do the town, we need to do the county.
I do not want the county to do like we have done with a lot of the ordinances that we've got. We put it on paper, and we don't enforce it.
Or we put it on paper and we don't pass it.
Or put it on.
I mean, we just went through this.
Yeah, I know.
And if you had listened to some of the, of us that had this whole conversation, but I do want to address one thing in that, and I may be wrong, I'm at kind of information overload, but did we not, in our fee adjustments, do away with the bulk item fee?
I thought we did.
We did. I, that's my understanding, but I'll clarify that. And the reason we need to know that is that messaging needs to get out there, because if the folks are thinking, what is it, ten dollar fee? If they're thinking that's still there, I, I recall us taking action with our fees to remove that bulk item, ten dollar fee.
That's the excuse that was given.
Yeah, I'd heard that some too, but that's been done for years.
I think that needs to happen, but I think we also need to push the ordinance again to clean up all the elements.
All right, that's whatever the pleasure of the board is. With that, thank you all for your comments. Very good comments. I'm working on some of those, and I will report at our mid-month meeting, or sooner, on a lot of those questions and comments. So it, it, it's going, it's gone unnoticed. With that, we are to close session. At this time, we're being asked to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute one four three dash three one eight dot eleven dot A dash six personnel and dash three legal.
So move.
A motion?
Recommendation that we go into closed session in approximately eight minutes to allow for the distribution and retention of liquids, sir.
That, and the motion needs to include HR.
Yes, second.
Motion and second to go into closed session. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any pose five oh. Take a five-minute recess before we go into that.